All right, let's call together this public hearing of objections on amendment MP 20-02 and amendment Z 22-02 for 302 Moat Drive here Monday, October 17th at the WCO Neil Arena Complex as well airing on Zoom and live streaming through Facebook. We, before we get kind of into the recording of attendance, I just want to let the public aware that there's two hearing of objections this evening. So if anyone is here regarding 256 and 260 Water Street, that will happen directly after this hearing of objection. So if you're commenting on that, we'll hold off for this meeting and do it the next one. This one is specific to 302 Moat Drive. So first thing is I can see that all members of council are in attendance. I see councillor Hurdle joining us from remotely back from his trip. Welcome back councillor Hurdle. And before we actually get into the approval of the agenda, I did want to recognize that we are on the unceded traditional territory of the Besko Tomogati people. I'll be looking for a mover for the agenda for this evening. I've got councillor Neil and seconded by councillor Heenan. It's just the kind of hearing objections, but I will see any changes to the agenda. Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor of approving this agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is everybody, the agenda has been approved. Disclosure of conflict of interest? Okay, myself, I am going to be declaring one this evening. This particular development is directly beside family members of mine and unfortunately it's impacted my personal life, so I'll be recusing myself from the rest of this process. I'll be looking for the deputy mayor to take over the hearing of objections. Before I pass it over, and this is kind of for both, and I'll repeat it for the next one as well, there's a number of people in attendance this evening. There's probably going to be some people joining us online. If you could keep your comments to about five minutes, it would be greatly appreciated to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to speak. And the other thing is if somebody says how you feel, you could say, I agree with that person and add any new context, just to make sure that we keep it moving. It does say the second meeting, or sorry, our third meeting, which is our regular council meeting, is going to start at seven o'clock. I don't think that's probably going to happen this evening, but in the essence of time, again, if you could keep your comments specific. And it is council's job this evening to listen, so it's your opportunity to speak specifically to the actual hearing of objections and what you do not like about it. In this particular case, it would be the amendment MP 20-06, which should be to the Town of St Andrews Municipal Plan, and then also to the amendment Z 22-02 to the Town of St Andrews zoning bylaw for this first meeting. So at this particular time, I'll recuse myself. I'm pretty limited to where I can go in this building, so I think I'll go hang out in the washroom. But I don't know, kids do TikTok videos, I'll figure something out. But if councillor Neil can let me know when I can come back in, it'd be greatly appreciated. I could just come back when this one is adjourned, actually, so.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, your worship. Just give him a few minutes to vacate. Okay, thanks everyone for showing up, and we are now going to hear the hearing of objections and the amendment to MP 20-06 to the Town of St Andrews Municipal Plan, MP 20-01 for 302 Moat Drive, PED 220611. And the council of the Town of St Andrews is holding a public meeting to hear objections to the proposed amendment of MP 20-06 to the Town of St Andrews Municipal Plan, MP 20-01 to move the property from commercial designation to residential designation on the generalized future land use map. So we do this one first and then the next one together, okay. So the second one we're doing at the same time is the amendment Z 22-02 to the Town of St Andrews zoning bylaw, Z 22-01 for 302 Moat Drive, PED 220612. The council of the Town of St Andrews is holding a public meeting to hear objections to the proposed amendment, Z 22-01 to the Town of St Andrews zoning bylaw, Z 22-01 to move the property from tourist commercial zone to multiple residential zone. All right, so we shall start. Who would like?
Deputy Mayor, just so you are aware, that we received only one letter in response to the public hearing of objections.
Since we got our package?
That was included in your package, that was the only letter received.
I was going to say, maybe it was extra, I didn't get it today.
No.
All right, we only received one letter then. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Knopper. Do I read the letter? Nope. Just ask for, anyone would like to speak first? Don't all jump to the podium and please don't rush and beat everybody up.
Can you put your mic on?
Oh, my mic is on. Is it mine?
Yes.
Yes. So is the mic on, Kevin?
There's a green light.
All right, thank you.
So I just wanted to raise a couple of concerns I have with the development.
Excuse me, could you announce your name?
Oh, sorry, Kevin Cooley. I'm from 86 Thomas Avenue. So this development has, in addition to the development on the corner of Bar Road, an impact of about 100 people coming to that small area. And on top of that, there's also the relocation of Pass McQuaddie Lodge in the same vicinity. I came up with the 100 people because I assumed that with the 21 homes that are going on the corner at Bar Road with two people in each is 42, and two people per apartment approximately at the Compass Apartments would be 84. That's actually a total of 126, so I just rounded it down. My biggest concern is at the last 100-year storm that we had, where we had 100 millimeters of rain, the whole entire end of Thomas Avenue flooded. There was a high tide, a super high tide, which caused a lot of that flooding. We're now going to add the drainage and the runoff from those 100-plus people in that area, which as far as I understand, and I may have my facts incorrect, but it is a 10-inch pipe that goes to an 8-inch pipe, which you can't push more through a smaller opening than it actually can handle. So that's my first concern. The other concern I have is with sewage backing up in the Thomas Avenue subdivision. There were five homes at the very end of the subdivision where sewage has backed up into their basements on more than one occasion. Yes, they may have drainage flow valves that have been installed, but one of them was installed and still continued to flow back in because everything was at equilibrium. Another concern I have with that many people coming into the community is that the RCMP presence is limited now for our town, and I'm wondering how we're going to handle that many more people along with the development up at Victoria Terrace in having the resident, the number of residents here increasing by that volume. Living on Thomas Avenue, there is a major corner in that street, and a lot of the people that come through that street have no idea how to take a corner on the right side of the road. With 100 people coming into the area, the traffic on that street will increase by maybe 80 to 100 cars. That's a concern for us, living on that corner, because people are speeding and not going on the correct side of the street. Then I did have thoughts about the impact with as much development as we have going on with the drinking water supply coming from Sham Cook Lake. I'm not sure if there are concerns that it's drying up, but that is another concern I have. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cooley.
My name is Ken McClay, I live at 224 Moat, so just down the street from this development. My bigger concerns are the fact that the developer has not provided us with what this building is going to look like, and I say that having watched the last town council meeting where she said she couldn't. I agree, she can't come up with an exact rendering, but there is absolutely, and I know because I work in the construction business and I've worked for industrial construction, residential construction, and mechanical construction, and have been involved in these kinds of things, that she could have produced, and probably the very first picture that should have been produced, was what was expected this building would look like. It might not be, because to her point, once all the services and everything are in there, it could make changes, but there should have been a rendering showing what they expect to produce there. And being as it's just down the road from my property, the fact that I don't know what it is that it's going to look like, is a concern to me for my property values, and all the property values of everybody around me. I further am concerned, the same as the last gentleman, about the number of people that are now coming into this area and the amount of traffic, but he's already covered all of that. My concern is that there's really no reason that we couldn't have some of the building is going to look like. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McClay.
Could I just move that a bit forward?
Sure, you can. Just don't pull the cord out, please.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Hi, James Geno, 228 Montague Street. And my commentary is less about the specific structure, but more, I'm a new person who's moved to town. I actually have a bachelor's in urban planning, so I take great interest in, you know, where the town's going and, you know, affordable housing, obviously, is a crisis and issue for our town. I just had a couple of questions around what, do we have a strategic housing plan to address affordable housing in St. Andrews? Not a zoning map, but like, not a plan, but has there been a, you know, cross-community consultation of stakeholders to develop, you know, what does affordable housing look like, who should be involved, et cetera?
Mr. Spear?
I'll pass it along to the planners, Xander Gopin. There actually has been, within the region, and more specifically, documentation provided by the Regional Service Commission on Housing, and he's actually authored it, so better for him to speak about it.
Yeah, I won't. It's great to have another urban planner around. I won't get into details of it, and it's not specifically for St. Andrews because the Service Commission is a regional body, but we have at least data on different things. And I'd be happy to talk more to you about it later. I don't think it's a good thing to take up the whole meeting with, but it is definitely something we're looking at, and how to do that and have it in appropriate places, for sure.
Okay, yeah, so the reason I just bring it up is that I've been watching all the council meetings. To me, it's the best thing to watch outside of like White Lotus. It's quite entertaining.
Thank you.
And I look at it with passion, and then, you know, with general interest as a newcomer. I brought tonight, there's tons of studies, Brookings Institute, there's University of Buffalo, I believe it's Richard, anyway, tons and tons of research on how to craft a proper affordable housing strategy. And one of my observations is that without a strategy and without a set of criteria for evaluating, it's going to make it very unfair for people like Ms. Bravickton, who wants to build a affordable housing development, people in town being able to assess if it's the right type of development, and council for being able to look at if it's meeting the criteria of what we feel is important in addressing the housing needs. So I would like to suggest that council or others look at the Urban Land Institute. It's from, developed in the US, it was with Fannie Mae and other thought leaders. It's probably the best 10-point guide for how to build an affordable housing strategy. The very first one is building trust and consultation with the community, having a community committee that is focused on what affordable housing should look like, where it should be located, what it should address, et cetera. I think that any gathering of individuals to voice concerns over development is moot without criteria for them to be able to say, is it checking the boxes? And that's all I wanted to say tonight, is that without having that, you're going to have a thankless job, because everyone's going to come here and complain about every development that's supposed to address the problem without being able to sort of bring it back to, is it accomplishing a set of criteria goals?
Okay, can you leave us the site?
I can email you the link, yeah.
That's great.
But that's all I just wanted to say, because I really want to see projects move forward, but also make sure that it's not, you know, I guess, a lack of progress over analysis, if you will.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Can I keep that? Thank you. All right. That would be useful for anything else. All right, do we have anybody else that wishes to speak on this?
Don't forget online.
Oh, and online, do we have anybody online besides councillor Hurdle, who can't speak yet?
Mr. Murray, if you wish to speak to council, can you raise your hand? I'm going to go with no.
Okay, so there's nobody else that would like to speak to this issue? So then we will consult later, and, but we will adjourn the meeting for now. So could I have someone to adjourn the meeting? Councillor Neil and councillor Heenan. So councillor Neil, if you would go and get our mayor, I can step down.
Your deputy mayor, your worship, and you actually, over here, your worship, you actually have to complete the motion.
Oh, so, okay, so councillor Neil and councillor Heenan have voted to close the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Contradicted? Carried. So I have someone adjourn the meeting? You did, right? So we already did that.
All right, let's call to order the public hearing of objections to amendment MP 20-02-01, which is for 256 and 260 Water Street, again, Monday, October 17th, 6:45 PM here at the WCO Neil Arena Complex. We're also on Facebook and on Zoom. I'm going to get right into the recording of attendance. I note that all members of councillor in attendance, including councillor Hurdle, who is joining us virtually. And once again, I did want to recognize that we are on the unceded traditional territory of the Besko Tomogati people. Be looking for a mover to approve the agenda circulated. I've got councillor Heenan and seconded by councillor Blanchard. Any changes to the agenda? Once again, we have a bigger meeting after with the motions, this is just for the hearing objections. Seeing nothing, so we will call the question. All in favor of approving this agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that is everybody, this agenda has been approved. Disclosure of conflict of interest? Seeing none. If anything comes up throughout the meeting, please let me know at that particular time. There is no presentation, we have had a few on this particular one, so we will get right into the hearing of objections. This is to amendment MP 20-02-01 to the Town of St Andrews Secondary Municipal Plan, MP 20-02 for PIDs 0132, 0035, and 1505, 4893, otherwise known as 256 and 260 Water Street, for Bridle Path International Incorporated, for second reading, PED 220710. The council of the Town of St Andrews is holding a public meeting to hear objections to the proposed amendment, MP 20-02-01 to the Town of St Andrews Secondary Municipal Plan, MP 20-02 for exemptions under HBD, so Historic Business District, section 2.1.2.6 A, B, and C for Bridle Path International's PIDs 0132, 0035, and 1505, 4893 at 256 and 260 Water Street. Do you have some on Zoom already, Mr. Knopper? There's four. I believe Mr. Greenaway wanted to speak. I thought it would be appropriate to kick off with him, as he did submit a letter.
Just a quick question, your worship. Councillor, councillor, sorry, the planner, Xander Gopin, was going to do a quick presentation on development scheme bylaws, because that'll answer some of the questions, or at least explain the process a bit, because they're kind of overlapping a little bit. It won't take very long, it's only four slides. If you're okay with that.
Yeah, let's kick off with that, for sure.
And it is a review, so if you were here on September something, it is same presentation. And the hearing tonight is not for this bylaw, but it is for a bylaw that says you need a development scheme bylaw to authorize any development, so. And I think people do rightly have questions about what does that actually mean? So, a development scheme bylaw, I guess one thing to explain is hierarchy in planning bylaws. So the Community Planning Act for the province of New Brunswick, that's at the very top, and that authorizes other bylaws, municipal plans and secondary municipal plans, like the amendment tonight to the secondary municipal plan, that's the next level down, so those have to conform with the provincial act. And then below that are development scheme bylaws, and below the development scheme bylaw is the zoning bylaw. So the development scheme bylaw would override a zoning bylaw for the area. Thanks, Paul? So this is what the Community Planning Act has to say about what development scheme bylaws can do and what they have to do. So they have to have written statements, maps, drawings, and other descriptive matter to illustrate the scheme. They must specify geographic area, so in this case, it would be the three PIDs. Set out details of development or redevelopment, so what is actually going to happen here. Describe manner of implementation, what are things going to look like, phasing. They may do some other things, allocate areas of land for particular uses, so that's kind of your land use part, and that would be done in this case. Just like any bylaw under the Community Planning Act, it requires a public presentation, public hearing, views of PAC, and three readings of council. So none of this has happened yet for a development scheme bylaw. This is for the secondary plan amendment, which says the height can be more than the secondary plan allows, but for any development to actually happen, a development scheme bylaw would have to go into effect first. In the case of exemptions and variances for a development scheme bylaw, the developer enters into agreements with council containing terms and conditions. So that's the variance method for the scheme bylaw. Next slide, please. So the benefits of this is obviously it allows council to set terms and conditions. Unlike an amendment to a zoning bylaw, the Community Planning Act does not authorize development agreements for municipal plan amendments. So if only a secondary plan amendment happens, there's no opportunity for agreements for things like stormwater management, you know, certain timelines, bonds, performance bonds, things that people have written in with concerns about. And so the development scheme bylaw can do that. It also extends the public consultation process. So instead of this being the last official public consultation, it would add another public presentation, another public hearing, and views of PAC, so there's more input that goes into it. And as that's happening, obviously more details are, the draft of the development scheme has to have fairly detailed plans in it. The other thing it does is right now, the land use part of the zoning bylaw for central commercial would not, would require there to be commercial uses on Princess Royal Street, which is something we've heard both in favor of and against. But the development scheme bylaw would, again, it would override that land use part, so whatever land uses the town wanted specifically could be included. And, yeah, so that's what I just said. And just, this is a quick example of something that was done in 1988 by the town as a development scheme bylaw, just to illustrate that it has been done. There's a lot of different contexts to this, but the town set out specific design criteria for the developer, and the developer met those criteria, and the town ended up with the townhouses and the student apartments around Langmaid Park. So that's a brief overview of development scheme bylaws. Technically, that process has not started yet. All of that would have to happen after this amendment is approved, if that happens.
Oh, just sorry to interrupt, just, there's a little bit of process where unfortunately you just can't yell out at a council meeting, and it's just to keep order, unfortunately. Council, is there, is there any questions for anything that the planner presented this evening? Okay?
No, thank you, your worship.
All right, so at this particular time, I'll switch to the hearing of objections. When it comes, I thought it'd be nice if Reverend Greenaway led off, just because we have received a few letters from him. The most, there was one out actually, again, right before the council meeting. I hope everyone had an opportunity to get the one this afternoon, but since his letter attached so many different neighbors and concerned citizens, I thought it would make sense for maybe him to go first. So I think I see him on there, so over to you Reverend Greenaway.
Thank you, Mayor Henderson, and Deputy Mayor Akaji, and members of the town council. And I don't know if you can see me on the screen? Are you able to see me?
No, it's just, it's just an r right now. We can hear you fine, though.
You can hear me fine? That's too bad, because I have a great prop behind me. Just kidding. Well, and I'll go ahead and proceed with the sound. You will hear in a few minutes from several of our neighbors who will express grave concerns about the proposed project for 256, 260 Water Street and Princess Royal Street. I want to be clear that this letter is not my letter, but it is the letter of the neighborhood and both immediate and near neighbors. I am merely the vehicle that is facilitating this. And so I rise to speak on behalf of the concerned neighbors of the proposed development, and in response to the call for objections and our comments under the proposed amendment to the secondary plan for Bridle Path International Incorporated. So again, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for recognizing me upfront here. Every one of the now 45 households that have joined on our letter, submitted to the council on Friday, and as you've shared, mayor, updated for the council this afternoon, is, are you able to hear me still?
We sure can.
Okay. Is committed to protecting and preserving the architecture, small-town flavor and quality of life of our community, and the town plat and historic business district as a recognized national historic site of Canada. We appreciate that these characteristics are what attract visitors, tourists, and residents to St. Andrews. After repeated efforts to focus the attention of the council on the consequences of the proposal for the town, and after further consultations with our neighbors, we declare our full and complete opposition to the Bridle Path proposal as currently conceived. If I may be direct, this is the wrong project for this site. It undermines and violates the spirit and intention of the objectives and policies set out in the historic district and town plat and environs secondary municipal plan. It violates the height, massing scale, and footprint limitations of both the historic business district and the town plat and environs. It undermines the town zoning bylaws encouraging and promoting zoning reclassifications that prioritize developers over residents, development over quality of life, and seriously chips away at the consensus developed town secondary municipal plan. We are convinced that the proposal will contribute significant and unreasonable light pollution from the building, individual unit, and garage lighting, and undesirable noise levels from the mechanical and ventilation systems. It will add unacceptable levels of freight, service, and vehicular traffic to the immediate and near neighborhood, rendering it unsafe for pedestrians, particularly seniors and children. Arguments offered suggesting that the property's previous use generated high traffic and that the proposal will have a positive effect on both parking and traffic simply do not comport with either the reality or the facts. And we are persuaded that the proposal will set unwarranted, unreasonable, and irreversible height mass scaling and footprint precedence for the historic district, town plat, and environs covered in the secondary municipal plan. To be clear, we support reasonable, respectful, sensitive, and thoughtful development in the town, and in particular of the site. But this project, members of the council, is in our estimation the wrong project for this site. It does not belong in the historic business district and the town plat. Successful development requires full process transparency, collaborative design and implementation partnership with impacted neighbors, and dynamic engagement with the community. It requires full vetting of a project's impact on quality It requires full vetting of a project's impact on quality of life, the quality of the architecture and overall design, its effects and consequences to pedestrians, traffic patterns, parking, other environmental concerns, and essential infrastructures and services. In short, successful development is far more than building heights and aesthetics. It demands that town leadership refrain from fast-tracking the interests of individual property owners and developers over the interests of the community. There is no enthusiasm for this project among the 45 households that have signed this letter. I repeat, the Bridle Path proposal is in our estimation the wrong project for this site. We do not believe that the council has adequately vetted the consequences of the proposal on the town, nor are we convinced that the council has taken previous comments, concerns, and recommendations seriously. The performative nature of the objection hearings, public declarations that appear to side with developers over the interests of the community, the apparent rush to act in the interest of developers, coupled with the absence of written responses to community proposed, community posed questions suggests disregard for the consequences of this proposal on the community. Finally, the council has offered, and we've just heard Mr. Goper speak, to the use of a proposed development scheme bylaw as a tool to manage this and future development projects. Experience and evidence suggests that such a bylaw would become a convenient workaround device to circumvent, excuse, exempt, or avoid compliance with the historic district and town plat and environs secondary municipal plan. We are convinced that enactment of such a development scheme bylaw outside of compliance with the secondary municipal plan will not benefit the community's residents or the town. Rather, it will be a ticket for development blight with devastating consequences for all that we hold precious about this town. For all these reasons, the 45 households that have signed the concerned neighbor's letter are fully and completely opposed to the Bridle Path proposal as currently conceived. We urge the council to cease further consideration of the project and reject the developer's proposal. To quote one of St. Andrews' outstanding citizens, "This proposal might be suitable in a city, but not in St. Andrews. It's too commercial, too large for the size of the law, and resembles an institution." In other words, the Bridle Path proposal is the wrong project for this site. We remain available and interested in offering our support to a successful project that fully comports with the secondary municipal plan and urge you to stand with the 45 households in the near and immediate neighborhood opposing this project. Thank you, Mr. Henderson, Mayor Henderson, Deputy Mayor Akeji, and members of the council.
Thank you Reverend Greenaway, and we do have that submission that echoes it, so council has that as well for reflection. Again, if council has not had a chance this afternoon to view that at this point. So thank you very much. Since I started on Zoom, we'll go, is there anyone else on Zoom like to raise their hand? And then we'll switch to people in the room. Got a hand there. You just want to, when you start, just say your name and your address before you start. I can't see it from here, I don't know what you guys.
Mr. Barry Murray.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Barry Murray, you have the Florida council if you wish to unmute yourself.
Your volume's not on, Mr. Murray.
Just give Mr. Murray a minute, there he's on mute now.
There you go, Mr. Murray, can you say something, please?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Again, mayor and council, I'm, we have written and I'm tonight representing the views of the St. Andrews Civic Trust. We did submit an objection at the second reading, and we are submitting an objection at the third reading. And I'll base our comments tonight specifically on the amendment and exclusion of the secondary municipal plan. However, as a trust, we remain without prejudice to reserve any other observations we may have rate as development should it proceed past this evening. The secondary municipal plan has been quoted by Mr. Greenaway and his group, and we support and applaud the group for having spent considerable time and energy in understanding the application of the secondary municipal plan. Just to remind us all, the primary objective of said plan is to retain and enhance the architectural and cultural heritage of St. Andrews, specifically the historic business district, the town plat, and environs, and to maintain the built character of the community for present and future generations. The secondary municipal plan is barely a year old. It's intended to be directional documents looking forward for the next 10 years. In our letter, we suggested that it would act as a north star to the council for future and current development decisions. But we asked the question, is this particular development respecting that stated intent? Mr. Greenaway's group and others have reminded all of us that we enjoy a wonderful definition in this country as the entire town does, that is, as a national historic district. And if I may, let me remind us all specifically what was said in the awarding of that particular prestigious title. And I'm quoting now from the, the observations that were made. "Since the founding of the town, the commercial sector in St. Andrews has been located along Water Street. In this compact area, the buildings are located in very close proximity to each other. Design continuity is provided by the repeated use of a simple rectangular built form and the application of classical detailing. Later 19th century buildings along Water Street are often three full stories in height, but they continue to respect the proportions already established. And in most cases, the relationship between the buildings and their surroundings in terms of volume, massing, materials, and embellishments." The secondary municipal plan states very simply that new buildings and new construction shall respect the general pattern of massing and scaling of the general vicinity and adjacent properties. Specifically, 2.1.6 sections A, B, and C state how the building height and footprint shall meet such requirements. This particular proposal requests to be exempt from all three of those requirements. To put a finer point on this, also section 3.41 of the secondary municipal plan states that residential and institutional buildings conform to a general pattern of two and one-half to three stories. So there's a conformity that supports a relatively homogeneous pattern of size and scale. So to the, to the request on the table this evening, we respectfully submit that the approval of a fourth story abandons the explicit intent of the secondary municipal plan. The approval of an exclusion to major sections of the secondary municipal plan nullifies requirements to respect the plan by establishing precedent. And the approval to exclude this development from major sections of the secondary municipal plan invites all future developers to expect similar treatment. And as I mentioned earlier, since this is the agenda item, the civic trust will reserve without prejudice any other observations should we, we may have referenced this development this particular proposal move forward. Thank you, mayor and council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Murray, appreciate that. Is there anyone else on Zoom? Just to show a hands if you'd like to speak. Just give one more call. Okay, we're going to transition to in the rooms, so we're going to close the Zoom comments for this evening. We'll switch to in the room, we'll ask you to come up to the podium, just so the benefit of Councilor Hurdle to be able to hear you, and as well just a reminder to state your name and your address when you speak. So the podium is open.
My name is Guy Grue, I'm at 50 Ernest Street, I'm a former councillor. And thank you for allowing me to present today, and I promise to be brief, but don't hold me to it. I'd like to start first by thanking the developers for coming to our town, deciding to invest. And my couns, or my, my comments tonight are going to be directed towards the council. First, I'd like to talk about the municipal and secondary plan. The municipal plan and secondary plan were developed during my tenure on council and were prepared after extensive consultation with members of the community, local officials, civic groups, outside agencies. The purpose of the municipal plan is to guide council, town staff, the advisory committees, developers, and residents in decisions affecting environmental management, planning, and development issues. Tell you, it was not easy, it took a year of consultation, but the council of the day achieved consensus within the community on how we wanted our community to develop. And we finalized the municipal plan and the secondary municipal plan and a zoning bylaw. The key principle behind the municipal plan was that the plan would guide council, staff, developers, and residents in the growth and development of St. Andrews in the long term, and laid out a series of objectives, policies, and proposals to meet these long-term strategic goals of the town. And Xander, you were instrumental in that. Long time. The idea is that residents and developers would have to formulate their proposals to conform to the municipal plan so that the town could develop in a manner that was consistent with the wishes and needs of the community. The underlying rationale of the municipal plan is that quite often, short-term decisions by a council that may seem right at the time might not be in the best long-term interests of the community. The municipal plan and secondary municipal plan are universal planning documents that are meant to be applied equally to all properties in the town of St. Andrews. It's the guiding vision for the long-term development of our town. The secondary municipal plan was developed in large part to provide some direction on future land use and development to protect the heritage value of the historic business district and the town plat. It is important to note that both the secondary and the municipal plan are not property-specific, like the zoning bylaw, but rather provide planning direction on a townwide basis. There is no variance process for the municipal plan or secondary municipal plan because all the properties in the town of St. Andrews must adhere to the provisions of these plans. Council can amend the municipal plan and secondary municipal plan at their leisure, but these amendments must apply equally to all properties. Section 24 of the Community Planning Act reinforces that the municipal plan and secondary municipal plan applies to the community as a whole. The request at for 256 Water Street is not, is not simple. It requires an amendment to the secondary municipal plan, an amendment to the zoning bylaw, and a significant number of variances. It has been proposed to grant an exemption unique to 256 Water Street from several clauses in the secondary municipal plan, and to do a development scheme which effectively does an end run around the zoning bylaw. To grant a specific property exemption from the municipal plan and secondary municipal plan may not even be legal and amounts to preferential treatment for a select few. To set aside the zoning bylaw to put in place a development scheme would do an end run around our zoning bylaw and undermines the zoning bylaw itself and reinforces the idea that the developer is being given special consideration that is not afforded to the residents of St. Andrews. Clearly, this is a case of development that does not, that does not conform to the municipal plan, the secondary municipal plan, and our zoning bylaws. And as was said before, it's a development that just simply does not fit. This invariably leads to the question of why residents should respect the municipal plan and zoning bylaw if council does not. If council wants to move ahead with 256 Water Street, then they need to ask themselves if they're ready to amend section 2.1.2 of the secondary municipal plan to change the height restrictions for all properties in the historic business district. And what implication will this have on heritage considerations? And I would suggest, instead of setting aside the zoning bylaw, council should work within the zoning bylaw to identify any amendments, variances, that may be required for this project to move ahead. And as I said, they're quite significant. But this will help restore the confidence in the town bylaws. The last thing I'd like to talk about is meaningful consultation. It appears much of the consultation that has been done is merely to satisfy the requirements of the Community Planning Act, rather than to solicit meaningful input from the public. And there's a perception that council has already made up their minds. For Water Street, council has already begun to craft a development scheme. And, and we still haven't got the public consultation and input. And this public, this development scheme will circumvent our zoning bylaws. So how can council come to the public today and say with any honesty that they are opening to hearing public objections for these projects? And they are objectively listening to the public when they're doing things behind the scenes?
This, it's fine to oppose something, but to speculate that this council has had anything to do with a development scheme bylaw, this council has not looked at it.
We just had a presentation.
He explained what it was, is that not correct?
And, and.
He did not explain what this development scheme bylaw, so I, please continue, it has been six minutes, but do not speculate that anything is happening behind closed doors because I will vouch for everyone on each side of me, that this has been a public process and not one person here has been a part of a development scheme bylaw to the point where there's questions being asked that we need answers to, and we're looking forward to seeing it as well. But please don't use this as an opportunity to make implications that council's dishonest or loyal, because I will not have it, to be completely honest with you.
No, what I'm saying, your worship, is that council is not being totally open with the public. And, and as an example.
That's your opinion, that's fine, continue.
As an example, council has approved $900,000 in development grants in their budget. They've awarded or they approved recently $500,000 for 302 Mawit Drive, the largest grant ever given in St. Andrews history. This represents a cost of $500 per household. And it was never discussed before with the public. It was before it was approved, and it does not appear to have gone through any competitive process. And again.
Just again, a point of order, please keep it specific to this particular hearing objections. You're using this as an opportunity to attack council, okay? So there will be hearing of objections related to that, and that funding is pending approval. So there is a process to follow, but again, you're using this as an opportunity to take shots where you can. So again, please stick to the bylaw, you've been probably almost 10 minutes now. So please wrap this up and keep it specific to the bylaw, Mr. Grue.
Okay, the last item I'll raise, your worship, is that the Fall Newsletter also indicated the need for a conservation heritage bylaw, which is a great idea for the community. Can we get a commitment from council that these developments proposed at 256 Water Street will be subject to such a conservation heritage bylaw? Or will they be exempt from this bylaw as well? Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else?
The presenter made, just, he talked about that the development scheme bylaw is potentially illegal, but it is something allowed under the Community Planning Act. Whether it's appropriate or not is up to council and the community to debate. It is definitely legal, though, definitely legal. You used the term illegal.
All right, we'll move, we'll move to the next one.
Ken Bobien, 54 Princess Royal Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this matter. I certainly feel that we are at a critical juncture of one of the most significant proposed developments in the modern history of St. Andrews. Because St. Andrews is a small town, it certainly makes decisions related to this site even more important. Preserved historic districts are rare in North America, and any changes to the character and functions must be carefully assessed and considered. One development does not make a historic district, but one can immediately degrade the character. The proposed development on Water Street is one such project, and in my opinion, must not move forward as proposed. Simply put. Simply put, it is the wrong project for the site. While myself and my family are new to the community, the impact of this project to not only the immediate neighbors, but broader community is apparent and profound. I'll just share kind of three key points on, on my thinking related to this. The development plan, we've talked a lot about the, I guess, the secondary municipal plan, um, is an important preservation tool for the unique look and history of St. Andrews. It is a plan for the community. It represents a path forward whose term is longer than election cycles and bigger than any one development project. The proposed development contradicts the foundations of the development plan, namely mass and scale. So while we do talk a lot about building height, attached to that is mass and scale. And it's a point I feel that can't be lost in this conversation where there is a hierarchy certainly of plans, and I understand that, but with this decision comes kind of a cycle and continuation of, of that issue. The building, in my opinion, is far too large for the site, and no change to exterior finishes will change this reality. It is the wrong building for the site. Precedent, so we've heard from a couple of speakers, where precedent in municipal plan, municipal planning is of critical importance. It provides stability and predictability for developers who want to come to the town and understand what's required, and then it also provides a common understanding for members of the community. The earlier speaker from Montague had mentioned, you know, having a checklist so you understand, and when council can assess it, the community knows how it's going to be assessed, and developers have a more predictable framework. In, in many respects, we have that framework for this side of the project, for the architecture, for the community, but it, it, it can at times feel like we're not using it. So you know, that framework in, to some respects, is in place, but we need to be able to use it and apply it for a development of this size and this impact. You know, and it, it does raise the question then, you know, having, I guess I'm one of the first houses that is considered residential on Princess Royal Street because we're right down the end towards the development where my neighbor is, is mixed use, but I'm residential. So it does say, what is the precedent then for that street in that area? You know, is there an incentive to restore some of the older historic homes in that area? Or are we creating a disincentive for people to do that, where simply you tear them down and put up larger buildings? So I'd urge council to consider that factor as well. My third point is just about people and community. You know, architecture, you know, we talk a lot about building heights, we talk a lot about building design. My background is as an architectural technician, so I've been on the other side of this, applying for variances in the city of Ottawa. So it is about the buildings, it is about the architecture, but it's also about the built environment we create for how communities and individuals live and thrive in the area. So we need to think about the spaces that we design and who is using them and how. So, you know, when you think about Princess Royal Street, we have two young kids that try and walk to the, the elementary school in town. My wife teaches in St. Stephen's, so we're really aware of, of how you try and move through spaces and use it as a community. I mean, the traffic on Princess Royal Street and, and having moved from a busier community is completely absurd for a residential street. You have transport trucks backing up in the morning, delivering to the dollar store through what's not really a road, but I guess a private laneway. You have traffic that's rerouted from the one street on Water, Water Street all summer long. The campers and the trailers all come down Princess Royal Street. So to have my kids walk to school, I've had to start walking with them to school because it's just, there's too much traffic. It's just not safe. The people can't see the kids, there's no sidewalks, the roads are in poor repair at that end of Princess Royal Street because of all the heavy traffic. So, you know, I just would urge council and members of the community to consider that it's, it's, it has a huge impact on how people are going to be able to move throughout the community, how kids are going to be able to get to, to school, and that's parking, you know, that's, that's not even considering the construction traffic and other variables for when something actually of this size gets built, which would be a prolonged development, even if everything went smoothly, this is a multi-year build. The other piece here, just to consider, is, is that, you know, I think there are a number of viable and well-suited designs for this site. I don't, I don't think we shouldn't be considering others, other projects for this site. I would encourage development, you know, having a vacant lot in that site is not optimal. I think we do need to develop it, but I think it needs to be a lot more consistent with the long-term goals and objectives for the town, and a lot more consistent with the architecture. I feel like the project as designed now, you could drop in any city and any town, and that's probably the problem with it, is that it doesn't fit the unique architecture character of the St. Andrews Historic District. It could live in Ottawa, it could live in Kingston, it could live somewhere else in Atlantic Canada. So that makes it ill-suited to fit in a very unique architectural envelope within this small town. So I would urge, I would urge members of council to reject the proposed development and, and start over for the site. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate it. Anyone else?
Holy crap, I'm not going to be able to top those. Okay, my name is Mike Anstein, I live at 41 Princess Royal Street, so I'm probably the one most affected by this project of anybody in town. And as Mr. Greenaway pointed out, our letter includes, oh, Mr. Knoppers hopefully got some visual aids coming here. And I might skip around and, and miss some of them because I don't have time to see them all, but, so basically, what I did is I took a, a, a map of the properties that so far have voted, or not voted, but signed our letter of opposition for this project in its current form. As you can see, we pretty much have the site surrounded. The only, you can see the aqua one there, that's the, the site for the Kingsbury, so I didn't put it, resident, so I didn't put it in the same color because Mrs. Fleming wrote her own letter of objection. So there's not very many houses left that aren't against this proposal in the, in the direct environ, environment of, of the development. We pretty much, the ones next to it are Jeff's properties, the one behind it is Jeff's properties. Some of them, we've talked to people who aren't really for the project, but they're friends of Jeff's, so they won't sign the letter. So, you know, we've got, I think, a lot of support, and if you, I asked Mr. Knopper basically, you know, for how many signatories we had, for and against, and he's sort of broken it down, for, against, and against with concerns, but if we, any, put our letter and against with concern, so if we, if we add them all up, we've got 11, four, and 175 against, totally against or against with concerns, so that's like 94% of the people who've written in are against this proposal the way that it is currently conceived. The next thing I'd like to address is Mr. Gopin's characterization of the development scheme bylaw. Basically, he brought forward the, I'm not going to go to another, another slide here. Basically, he brought forward the 1988 Langmate Park Development Scheme bylaw as something to hold up as the way the town should do this. There's one glaring-
Sorry, just as the process, not as the actual-
No, no, I understand that, I understand that. So this is why, this is what I want to bring up. There's one glaring difference between what happened in 1988 and what's happening today. In 1988, the town developed this development scheme bylaw first, then asked for proposals. In our case, we have a proposal, now we want to craft the development scheme bylaw to fit the developers' needs. So this is what other, other people have brought up as well. Next, I want to get to the height of the project because I find this very interesting. So you, are we into, we can get into Mr. Gopin's report? So on September 6th, we all, there was a lot of talk about height, and I think that Mr. Spears stated that Xander Gopin did a, a report that covered the height and the exemption from the, the municipal MP2 para 6. So... Where am I here? On the first page of the town planning report? This is, this is the act, the other document. Maybe I didn't send it to you. Anyway, this is the, this is the town planning report that was, that was presented to the town council by Xander Gopin on June 20th, night, 2022. And during the September 6 meeting, we had Counselor Heenan asked the million-dollar question, "How tall was Mr. Holmes' construction that was approved?" And Mr. Gopin replied, "That got a variance of 14.4 meters." Well, if we look at, I think it's the second page there, one, back up one more. You can see that the actual variance that that project was approved for was 13.25 meters. So that's the first error in his report. The second error is that he said that it was 30 units. It's actually 36. The third error is that he said that, that the lots had reverted back to central commercial. This is, remember, June 20th, you guys didn't vote on that until August 3rd. And the fourth thing that I don't think that works in that report, he says, "So long as residential use does not front onto Water Street, such uses are allowed as secondary to main commercial use in the, in the central commercial zone." There's only one way into that building besides the garage, that's the front door on Water Street for the, for, for the residents. So I don't see how this meshes up. And finally, he did a little height map for you guys. And the height map basically shows buildings around the block, every one of them, by the way, more than 120 years old, and had, probably had a different zoning bylaws at the time about 120 years ago, that were somewhere close to the heights of, that's going to come next, so, so were somewhere close to the heights of this proposed development. But I went and I, I walked around and I checked them all, and first of all, let, let's, um, let's go to the definition of height, which means, "In relation to a building or structure, the vertical distance is measured from the grade level to the highest point on such building and structure. Height does not include towers associated with fire stations, chimneys, ornamental roof construction features such as towers, steeples, or copulas, or mechanical things." So every item on that pipe map is either a chimney or a copa. So you can probably-
I'm sorry, that's not true.
Well, what, what's, what's not true about it? The only one that, that isn't a chimney is the one, is, 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 um, the Butterfields property.
They all have chimneys and copulas, but that doesn't mean that's the highest point on the building for the height bylaw.
That is where your arrow is on every, in, in every instance.
The arrows aren't pointing to the highest point of the building, they're just pointing to the properties. I'm really sorry, but if you're just going to attack me, please be correct.
Okay, so maybe, I, I, I guess we'll have to find out with a, an actual height survey, but, so your height on, the Butterfields was correct?
The height was done by taking, it's a complicated mapping procedure, but we check and make sure that we're not taking the chimney. You can tell when there's a chimney, the two points are higher, so you pick the point in between, that's the, the roof.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, then, I'm, I'm, I'm misconstrued, but anyway, when we look at the Butterfields place in particular, where are we taking the measurement from? We're taking it from the back of the lot, because on Water Street to the back of the lot, the property drops 24 inches. So that makes the, the property 24 inches taller. And that just so happens to be very similar on the other side of the street, except that this building is longer, so it drops 30 inches. So now, the height of this building, if we measure from grade from the back of Princess Royal Street, is, um, 15 meters, which is 43.5 feet. So now is it in violation of para 6D, where the height cannot be more than 14.5 meters or 41 feet? Could you answer that, please, Mr. Gopin?
The height is from the natural grades. I don't, I don't even, I really don't understand what you're saying.
No, the natural grade-
The natural grade is usually changed when a project is-
Well, the natural grade of, of Princess Royal Street crowns from Water Street-
Do you read what grade means in the zoning bylaw?
And goes down.
Grade is the height after the project is finished. So it's the, once the soil work has been done, that is grade according to the zoning bylaw.
Well, grade is from the sidewalk, as, as far as I was told.
Should check the definition in the zoning bylaw.
Just to wrap up the point, just to keep it going, because we are running low on time, is that you're saying that it's, it's, this variance is even larger if you take your definition of grade, and that's something that we can follow up on for sure.
So the most important thing I wanted to cover there is massing and scale, because the, the last thing that Mr. Gopin says is that, um, in his report, it, it says, "As for the 2MP, building height shall be," but that's not what it says in para 6 of the, the, the definition. It says, "It is proposed that new buildings and construction alterations in addition shall be, respect the general pattern of massing and scale of the general vicinity and adjacent properties. This may be achieved in one of the following ways." It does say building height, but it also says, "And footprint shall be." So building height and footprint, it's got, A, B, and C do not deal with height alone. That's like, it's a three-legged stool, and height is one of the legs. You can't, um, consider, height is a dependent variable on the, on the width and the depth. So when we're talking about A, B, C, A, B, and C of the bylaw, it's not just the height, it's the massing, which, if we look at my pictures here-
Yeah, we're, we're at 10 minutes, so if you want to-
Yeah, so that'll be the last thing that I cover. So if you look at the pictures, you can see on the top one, that's the Kennedy Inn on the, on the right. Where am I?
Is it possible, Mr. Knopper, Mr. Spears said this diagram to council, just because I don't think I've seen this diagram before.
Okay, but that, so that's the Kennedy Inn on the right, and as you can see, it masses about 2,000 square feet on the Water Street. As you can see, Bridle Path masses about 3,570 square feet, so Bridle Path is 178% bigger than the Kennedy Inn, which you said that if, if it was on that block, it would, we would be going ahead with a, a development agreement. But that's not true because it doesn't fall within the massing requirements. If you go to the, the one below it, we look at 246 and 250 Water Street, there, it's even worse. There's two separate buildings, so you can't add them together, and 246 Water Street's only 750 square feet, so it's 476% bigger, or Bridle Path is 476% bigger than that building. And then if you go to 250, it's 564 square feet, which is even smaller, so Bridle Path is 620, mass is 620% more than that building. So if we look at the, the secondary municipal plan in its totality, and I asked Mr. Gopin today whether or not this amendment that we're putting forth is solely for the height and not for the other requirements, and he, he said yes, but you cannot separate the height from the length and the width. Massing is, is a combination of all three. So if you look at these things, you can see that it definitely violates the spirit of the secondary municipal plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And sorry, Mr. Knopper, you said those were sent out today?
I received the latest version of it.
Okay, so you'll, you'll circulate that, perfect, thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, your worship, Deputy Mayor, Counselors. My name is Franklin Cardy. Thank you for inviting us near neighbors to speak about this proposal. I understand that we're allowed to comment as opposed to just opposing.
Correct.
Um, I live on Pagan Street, and I walk past this property every day on my way to the post office or up to the jail, the archives in the old jail. I'm Chair of the Charlotte County Archives, and Jeff Holmes is the Vice Chair. At the archives, we are concerned with preserving our heritage, but we are also concerned with community and social development. So we're pleased that the town has developed and approved a municipal plan, or several municipal plans, with carefully considered generic bylaws to guide development decisions. It's appropriate that proposed developments are judged in the light of this plan and the bylaws, as Guy emphasized earlier on, the municipal plan is for guidance. But judgment is the key word. Our council is elected to pass this, to, sorry, is elected to pass judgment on these issues. Our council is not a group of six narrowly-defined experts on legal matters, or on economics, or on planning. Our council is elected from the community at large, like a cross-section of residents. You are elected to apply common sense to development decisions, taking all relevant factors into account, and the broader interest of the whole community. Now, this property is currently vacant wasteland, bringing no economic benefit to the town apart from a few thousand dollars in property tax. I believe there's no designation in the municipal plan for wasteland, so the property is currently non-compliant. The property has been zoned as mixed-use residential, I believe it's- The property has been zoned as mixed-use residential, I believe it still is, but it's unclear. There is strong demand for residential property of all kinds in St. Andrews. Jeff Holmes and Bill Stanley have spent several years, and I believe a considerable amount of money, trying to develop an appropriate use for this property. We are talking about one particular property, but they were unable to make it work at that time, and were faced with several objections. Now, a new effort is being proposed. Much thought and care has gone into this to find a way to make the land productive, in the spirit of the municipal plan, and in a constructive manner for the development of the town. Every effort is also being promised by the highly reputable developer to address the reasonable concerns of the neighborhood. I ask you, what happens if this proposal is rejected? Nobody's talking about that. You're going to have to face that. Who's thought about it? Is there any alternative proposal for this empty space? You're not being asked to choose. You are being asked to choose between wasteland and a particular proposal that's been carefully thought about. If this proposal is rejected, do you imagine that after all this effort, a better one will be found for this property? So the property will likely remain nonconforming as wasteland. It is possible that the only alternative for Jeff, the owner, left with it, might be to sell this property to a giant tiger, or an expanded dollar store, if he can find somebody to buy it. How would this fit within our neighborhood wishes, and with the heritage community development that we would like to see in this town? So, my point is, is the town effectively going to leave this land fallow by preventing this development? Remember, the municipal plan is for your guidance, and you're elected to consider the broader issues all across the town. Your Worship, this proposal is a serious attempt to make a significant contribution to the residential and commercial property base of the town, in as sensitive and considerate a manner as possible. There is not much you can do with a apartment block to make it look like an old, 100-year-old building. No demand is being made of the town by the developer, not asking for financial support, like is needed for others. He's just being asked to be allowed to proceed. There is no better offer, there's no other offer in front of you, nor, in my view, is one likely to be found. I strongly urge the council to approve this proposal and show that the council is not against much-needed development. I believe this nonconforming wasteland can be turned to productive use and appropriate use in a sensitive manner. I believe you should allow it to proceed. And my back is hurting already in motion.
Thanks, Mr. Cardy. Anyone else?
I'm here to talk about the development, too. I'm 49 Princess Royal Street. I'm one of the ones that is directly impacted by this development. Now, I looked at the pictures that were shown by the developer, and not surprising, they didn't show the view that I'm going to be looking at every day, which is the back end of that building. So if you look at the back end of that building, it's basically a concrete wall with a few windows in it, a door, a garage driveway, and probably a bunch of utilities hung off the back for the common areas. I disagree completely with this development, the way it stands. We do have guardrails, as our planning department has identified, in the three municipal plans and the zoning bylaws that we have. That's what we have right now. That's where this development should be looked at. The idea of creating another plan for this development is completely wrong. Send it back, create the plan, and then start with it again. You've seen that there's a lot of people that do not want this development to happen, and personally, I will not stop fighting this development through every meeting that there is for it, and I'm sure there are others. So I'm going to try my best to stop it. What I have to say to council is, you should probably do it now. Get it started the proper way before you create animosities through this whole town about it, because I'm sure that'll happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do one last call? Yep.
There's not much I can say that wouldn't be considered presidential. I lost my word. Presidential, as the owner of the property. But keep in mind what the alternative will be. As Franklin said, there have been no other offers. The property's been for sale off and on for the last seven years, and none of the people who have strong views as to how it should be developed have come along with an open checkbook. I'm pleased that Mr. Rock has taken this project on, and I believe he will do as much as he possibly can to appease the concerns, or address the concerns of the neighbors, and be reminded, when you buy a property, you don't buy a view. And we've all been caught up in this at various times. If somebody builds next to you and you lose your view, that's an unfortunate part of any development. There are worse things that could happen on that corner than a 34-plus-two commercial unit walk-and-lock development.
That's 36, actually.
That's 34, pardon me, plus two.
No, 36 plus two, 36.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Anyone else?
Whoever it ends up--
Oh, just order. You guys can talk about that after. Yeah. Yeah, anyone else?
Hi, Rob. We're 93 Frederick Street. We're new here. So this is kind of fun. My only observation to this whole process is that I think that this represents an extraordinary opportunity for council to take the gatekeeper role very clearly and sensitively. I'm an optimist, and I have every hope that the concerns that are very, very assiduously and eloquently and brilliantly presented on both sides of this project, I would suspect. I am signatory to the opposition to the project, but I would never say that I'm out of, I don't oppose building projects out of hand. I think there's always room for development. I think development is very necessary. I come from San Francisco, and there have been very terrific, sustainable projects that have worked there. There have been some absolutely unmitigated disasters also in San Francisco. But coming here, I look around, and I see that there are some very, very brilliant minds that probably could do a little deeper dive into how some of these concerns, and these great concerns, can be ameliorated. So that's where my optimism is going to lie, is that this doesn't represent the end of the road, that there are many opportunities for council, for the developer, and for all the interested parties, and there are many interested parties, obviously, here in St. Andrews. We once lived on Salt Spring Island, and Valdi once described Salt Spring as "an argument surrounded by water." And St. Andrews, I get the whiff of a little bit of that, too, and I don't think there's really anything wrong with that. I think it's a good thing. So I encourage everyone, all the stakeholders, to not look at it as the end of the project, and I'm much more optimistic than you, sir. I think that there is a way, there's always a workaround, and I don't think we have to throw up our hands in defeat on either end of the question. So I appreciate being able to speak, and good luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I agree with all your comments, except maybe the fun part. So I get the big dollars, though, hey, guys? Anyone else?
Gary Erwin Kenyon, I live on Princess Royal Street. This is just really quick. I think the previous comments are in the right way to proceed with this, and there are people who really care about the town, care about the neighborhood, care about where we live, and nobody who signed that letter said there should be no development, period. We all said, "It cannot, we don't want it to go forward as it is now." So echoing my previous speaker's comments, there are ways to do this without saying, "Throw out the baby, throw out everything, and start again." Okay, I just wanted to emphasize that, right from Reverend Greenway, we said, "It's the way that the proposal as it stands cannot go forward, we don't want it to go forward." Doesn't mean something can't be done. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. Anyone else?
My name's Bill Stanley, and I live at 78 Sophia Street. I hadn't intended to speak, because I thought that it would be well-covered, but there's something that really is not quite said completely, I think, is that this town needs new residential development. And it's not easy to do residential development, and the reason I'm speaking to you is that I was a partner with Jeff in developing this property for residential use. And we worked approximately two to three years. My job with Jeff was to determine the financial arrangements, and in so doing, I hired professional accounting skills from St. John's, and we went through various iterations of development. The space, the square footage, the number of units, the garage, the town plat, and we went through a process, too, before town council. And ultimately, we did manage to get approval, and then we were ready to proceed. But a cautionary word here, proceeding doesn't mean that it was going to work, because when we started to put our plan into effect, to initially sell condominiums, and then secondarily, when that didn't work, to have apartments, there was not, there was not a positive financial outcome for the developer in using, in our case, 18 apartments. And they were well-equipped apartments, they were upscale, but I can tell you that there was no way that 18 units would pay for development on that property. So it's got to be of some scale. If it's not of scale, it's not going to work. And I can't tell you how many iterations of this that we did. This town needs development, and needs thoughtful development, and it takes a very thoughtful and experienced developer to carry this off. And I think that's all I want to say, is that if you have a really experienced developer interested in St. Andrews and in residential housing, you've got one. So word of caution, that property is not easy to develop. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Hi, good evening. Liz Erwin Kenyon, 18 Princess Royal Street. I've listened to all the speakers tonight, and we have over 180 people signing in our area that do not want this project. We're not against development, it's just this is the wrong project for this area. So the scare tactics of, "It's going to be barren land," or "It's going to be a giant tiger," don't seem to be in the realm of open discussion. There are many other things that can be done, and it just takes, like selling a house, one buyer, one right buyer, to see the bigger picture for the historic area, for the neighborhood, traffic concerns, and I would really appreciate if you would all really listen to it and not make your minds up until you think back to the neighborhood. We elected you, and we really want you to think of us first before the developer. Not saying that that's happened, but think of your community. If that was across from where you live, if you had little kids going to school, if you had trouble with parking, what would you do? What would you want in historic St. Andrews? Like in Europe, you know, they have very rigid rules of what can be, so that you go to Europe, and you're so happy to be there, because there's this historic vibe to it. And that's what we'd like here in St. Andrews. And good apartments for everybody, proper housing, but this is the wrong project for this area. Thanks so much.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else? I'm sorry, I'm not going to do a round two this evening. Yeah, we do have another meeting after this, so we did limit everyone to one opportunity, up to five minutes was the plan, but it was closer to 10 in most cases, so I apologize for that, but it's just a one opportunity for this evening. Anyone else that has not had an opportunity to speak, though? Okay. All right, at this particular time, then, we've checked Zoom, and we've done the room through one time around, so at this particular time, we will move into, look for a motion to adjourn. I've got Deputy, I've got Counselor Gomishel and Counselor Hien, all in favor of adjourned. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is everybody, and we'll get going with the other minute. About, I'll give you guys a two-minute break, if that makes sense, in case anyone needs a refreshment, and we'll go. All right, everyone, this is the regular council meeting here, still on Monday, October 17th, 7:00 PM. This was immediately following the public hearing of objections this evening. We're at the WCO Neil Arena Complex, and we're on Zoom and Facebook as well. I'm going to get right into the recording of attendance. I note that all members of council are in attendance, including Counselor Hurdle, who is joining us virtually this evening. And again, I certainly want to recognize that we're on the unceded traditional territory of the Besko Tumugadi people. So approval of agenda, I'm going to look for a mover to approve the agenda. I've got Counselor Blanchard this time, and second by Counselor Hurdle. I got the screen. All in favor of, sorry, any changes to this agenda? All in favor of approving this agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that has been approved. At this time, we are, we are in disclosure of conflict of interest, any this evening? Seeing none, and we are into a presentation by Mr. Alexander Gopin, Senior Planner, and he's doing a presentation on Amendment MP 20-0202 to the secondary municipal plan, MP 20-02 for PID 1521 CR 289, which is a lot on Carlton Street for Mary Trubner, which is PED 221007. And Mr. Gopin is, if I, not that we want to rush through it, but as quickly as possible.
It's pretty fast. This is a very different amendment than the other one that has been discussed tonight. It's actually a building that would be smaller than is allowed by the secondary municipal plan. It's a vacant lot in the town plat. Just give Paul a second to catch up here. Vacant lot in the town plat. Let's keep going through that. The proposed building is a 1,200-square-foot, two-story, single-unit dwelling in the Cape Cod style. Because this is on the town plat, the footprint is controlled by the secondary municipal plan. It's the footprint, not the volume, slight difference there. And as we all know, that can't be varied, and it requires an amendment. So, next slide, please. This is what it looks like, and I did drive past there today, and it looks pretty much exactly the same. Yep. And there's the aerial view of it. And you can see the, just while we're there, you can see the other houses on the block. There's not a lot of them, and they're all pretty big. So if you're familiar with that block, a lot of large houses there. So 1,200 square foot is actually not getting close enough. This is the proposed site plan. The house would be set back significantly. There's a tree. You saw those tall hedges. The applicant's desire is to keep as much of the hedges as possible. Obviously, a driveway would have to go in there, but I think the building would be pretty hidden from the street. And the next slide is a--
Sorry, it didn't come through clearly on my--
Oh.
Just pause on that last one just for a second. So the street is at that water--
At the bottom, yeah.
And the hedge, the entrance would be where the break is in the hedge?
I don't know if they've identified the driveway on there.
Counsel, when you are speaking, can you please turn on your mics? Thank you.
Sorry.
But I assume they would access it through where that the break is already.
Existing entrance.
It would just have to be widened a little bit.
And don't quote this, but I'm pretty sure in the original email, it gave reference to the hedge being important for the design, that's why it can't be as big as well, so that gives me the indication that they're planning to save the hedge. So that gives me the indication that they're planning to save the hedge.
Yeah, they don't want to do as -- they want to leave as much of the hedge as possible and all the existing vegetation, including, I think, there's a large maple tree there. Yep, so we can keep going. Site plan.
Circle.
The circle is a tree.
Oh, sorry.
So it's the canopy of the tree. I think the applicant's husband is an architect, so he did a nice landscape architect drawing. Okay, next slide, please.
Thank you.
Yeah, so this is the style of the house, and I think it's actually the same plans except for the garage and the extension on the right. So it looked pretty similar to that, except the hedges would be in front, and it would be set back significantly. Look at the municipal plan policies, the primary municipal plan. There's not a whole lot there, but we do have environment and climate change, support efficient and sustainable land uses, requiring someone to build a -- would be a seventeen-hundred square foot. That would be the smallest that they could build with the secondary municipal plan, when all they want is twelve-hundred, seems against this policy. And also, it's adding infill development in an already serviced area. You don't have to worry about new services. They're already all there. So that's fiscally a good decision. And as we all know, the intent of the secondary municipal plan is to ensure design uniformity. Now, I would call this an unusual block because you have the footprints that range already from seventeen-fifty to thirty-seven-hundred square feet. So there's a lot of variation in that already, and you wouldn't see much of this development. And the zoning bylaw would still apply. In this case, I don't think it is necessary to have another layer of regulation, like the development scheme bylaw, because this is, again, it's smaller, it's in a -- not in a very prominent location. It would be mostly screened, and the zoning bylaw would still apply. So that's the public presentation.
Thank you very much. Any questions from any member of council in regards to that presentation? Seeing none, thank you very much. And we already did the approval of minutes from previous meeting communications and staff report, so it'll take us right into the introduction and consideration of passing of bylaws. I do want to note that I'll be looking for someone to amend the first motion. It's -- the wording's not probably what it should be, and I'd like someone to move to accept the resignation of Tom Clark from the town of St. Andrews.
I will.
Okay, so we've got Counselor Heenan moving to amend it. Do I have a second on that? I've got Counselor Neal in there for second. Any discussions on that amendment? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor of that amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, Your Worship.
Perfect, so the amendment has been approved. So I guess we'll -- do we still require a mover and a seconder again for the?
You haven't read the first motion.
Oh. Didn't I just read it? Oh, you want me to read the background and then just do the regular? Okay, I'll get -- I can give you the wording again, Deputy Mayor, but if you want to read the background, I guess, is what we're -- you still want the background? Okay.
I think I've got something. All right. So it's F.A. two-two zero-nine-one-two, and it's the revocation of appointment of Thomas Clark, by-law enforcement officer of the town of St. Andrews, for the town of St. Andrews. The town -- the background is this: The town of St. Andrews has received a letter of resignation from Thomas Clark, by-law enforcement officer and morphinger. As there was an official appointment of Mr. Clark as a by-law enforcement officer under the Local Governance Act, council must complete the revocation of the original appointment. Note that the town currently has Shelley Dunn as an appointed by-law enforcement officer and Chris Spear and Paul Nauper as appointed acting by-law enforcement officers.
Okay.
So the motion.
So we wouldn't read that motion. You want the amended one, correct? So the amendment, do you want me to read it again, or do you have it?
I think I have something.
Okay, go ahead.
That the council of the town of St. Andrews accepts the resignation of Thomas Clark as by-law enforcement officer.
Perfect. Okay, so that's a friendly amendment to what we just amended it to. So we'll look for a mover on that, though.
I so move.
Counselor -- sorry, Deputy Mayor Akaji, and then seconded by Counselor Heenan. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, all in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That has been carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Sorry for the confusion. We are now moving on to planning and economic development would be the next one, and it would be Counselor Heenan.
Thank you, Your Worship and Council. It's PED two-two one-zero-zero-seven. Amendment MP twenty dash oh-two dash oh-two to the secondary municipal plan, MP twenty dash oh-two for PID one-five-two-one-zero-two-eight-nine, lot on Carlton Street for Mary Truittner. First reading: The town of St. Andrews has received an application for the amendment to the secondary municipal plan, PID one-five-two-one-zero-two-eight-nine, a lot on Carlton Street between Elizabeth Street and Edward Street for Mary Truittner. The applicant is seeking to construct a thirty-by-forty-two-story Cape Cod-style, single-unit dwelling. Due to the size of the lot and the massing and scale, an amendment would be required to the secondary municipal plan to allow the build on the lot. Please see attached staff report from Mr. Gopin, senior planning officer, on the proposed amendment. Required to complete the amendment process. Public presentation was done tonight on October seventeenth, 2022. First reading: Public hearing of objections obtained views of the Planning Advisory Committee, second reading, and third reading. The first step in the process is set a date for public presentation. This requires fourteen days of notification to the public as per the Community Planning Act. And the action is that council grants leave for the first reading to the amendment, MP twenty dash oh-two dash oh-two to the town of St. Andrews Secondary Municipal Plan, MP twenty dash oh-two for PID one-five-two-one-zero-two-eight-nine. Mary Truittner to be exempt from any policy or proposal in the secondary municipal plan, MP two-zero dash oh-two. I so move, Your Worship.
Thank you, a seconder. Okay, Counselor Goumichel, discussion on this motion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, Your Worship.
That's everybody, so we will go to first reading. This is bylaw number MP twenty dash oh-two-oh-two, a bylaw to amend bylaw number MP twenty dash oh-two, being the secondary municipal plan bylaw for the town of St. Andrews. Being enacted by the council of the town of St. Andrews as follows. Number one, bylaw number MP twenty dash oh-two, the secondary municipal plan bylaw for the town of St. Andrews is amended by adding the following up per Schedule B. That would be Schedule C, which is number one. PID one-five-two-one-zero-two-eight-nine is exempt from any policy or proposal in MP twenty dash oh-two. This has been read the first time, the seventeenth day of October, 2022. Next motion.
Thank you, Your Worship and Council. That council requests the views of the Planning Advisory Committee of the town of St. Andrews as per Section one-one-zero of the Community Planning Act to amendment MP twenty dash oh-two dash oh-two to the town of St. Andrews Secondary Municipal Plan, MP two-zero dash zero-two for PID one-five-two-one-zero-two-eight-nine for Mary Truittner to be exempt from any policy or proposal in the secondary municipal plan, and I so move it.
Thank you very much, a seconder for that motion. Again, quick tonight, Counselor Goumichel. Yeah, I'm looking to the right a little more tonight. Any discussion on this motion? No? We're very consistent. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And once again, that is everybody, and the final one.
Thank you, Your Worship. Motion: That council sets the date of Monday, November the fourteenth, 2022, at six-thirty PM at the W.C. O'Neal Arena Council Chambers for public hearing of objections as per Section one-one-one of the Community Planning Act to the amendment of MP two-zero dash zero-two dash zero-two to the town of St. Andrews Secondary Municipal Plan, MP twenty dash oh-two for PID one-five-two-one-zero-two-eight-nine, Mary Truittner, to be exempt from the policy or proposal in the secondary municipal plan. I so move.
Thank you. And once again, I'll be looking for a seconder. Deputy Mayor Akaji, discussion on this last motion? Seeing none, so I will call the question. All those in favor of approving the hearing of objections date, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's everybody, and we are through the motions. At our new business, there was a request for me to write a letter for Mr. Gee Grue in regards to -- actually, I'll maybe let Mr. Nauper or Mr. Spear just comment on it. There was a bit of a staff note there, just in regards to a grant application.
Thank you, Your Worship. So the town did receive a request to support a New Horizons grant through Mr. Gee Grue for his Rally by the Sea event. So in the report, approximately two-hundred recreational vehicles are brought to the community on a three-day weekend to create -- it's usually of rally, like vans, people camping out, using the campground. The request is that they submit that they're trying to acquire tricycles, electric tricycles, I believe up to six, for the event. Generally speaking, counsel, when we look at supporting grants and applications, specifically through the New Horizons for seniors, the grant is generally looked at as how is it supporting the community? How is it engaging the community? How is it going to be used by the community? In fact, fifteen percent of the actual grant application actually highlights community use. As this event, staff went through the request to have some concerns, and I'm just going to list them for you, that the rally event is for people from outside of St. Andrews coming here for a three-day event. So how is that supporting the community other than economic development? With the trikes, who's going to own the trikes in the end? And what is their purpose of them beyond the three-day event? And how is it benefiting the community in that light? Who is responsible for the maintenance and upkeep? Who is responsible for the liability? If it is a community use, how are they going to be implemented in that light and form? As well as, are these trikes only going to benefit the Rally by the Sea? And where will be the -- where will they be stored, and how will the community gain access? Generally speaking, to give you an example, when we apply for New Horizons for seniors grants, we've been working with the age-friendly community on this, looking at it from a standpoint of they've added more picnic benches and benches along the trails, as well as the purchase of the bike repair stations. They got received a grant to support the outdoor exercise center with twenty-five thousand dollars for the outdoor exercise equipment that benefits the whole community. So those are examples of projects that we've successfully received through the grant process that benefit the whole community. The request that was brought forward at this point in time, staff have concern about how is it overall going to benefit the community of St. Andrews. So that should be taken into consideration by council.
Perfect. And just for information, I don't believe there's a board for this particular event. It's an individual that owns it. Do we have any financial statements to indicate if it's for profit, or?
We have received no financial information. Or on the event, we haven't actually received any descriptions of the event, other than what was briefly provided in the request for support letter.
And not to put you on the spot, do you have examples of previous projects that the town of St. Andrews has supported? They're usually something that anyone in the community can access, and this one feels a little different.
So, for example, again, working with the age-friendly community, more benches and bike repair stations were purchased and used by the community, as well as the outdoor exercise facility that's going to be installed next year. They had a twenty-five thousand dollar grant that was for an indoor facility where we're sitting, but was moved to an outdoor facility, and the granting body agreed because it was still benefiting the entire community.
Perfect. Okay, counsel, I'm looking for some consensus, since it is for, I'd almost say, a private organization, and I don't know what the use will be for the community and seniors in our community. I'm comfortable with staff's recommendation. Does anyone feel different about that? Counselor Heenan?
I have read all the report. First off, when is it? When's the event going to happen or scheduled to happen? I couldn't find that.
Through you, Your Worship. Generally speaking, it happens during the months of July or August, usually on the long weekend of August, if I'm not mistaken. However, I have not personally seen any advertisements myself.
Okay. Thank you, Your Worship.
Okay. All right. So just a quick consensus. How many's fine with me not writing the letter? Just signify with your hand, by aye. Not writing, yeah. Okay, that's everybody, so I will let Mr. Grue know tomorrow. All right, we're into question period. Again, this is on things related to this agenda, but we'll see if there's -- is there anyone on the line for this meeting? Mr. Nauper?
We have two attendees. If any of the attendees would like to raise their hand online to speak to council, do so now.
Okay.
One last call. If you would like to -- those in attendance on Zoom, if you'd like to raise your hand and speak to council, please do so now.
All right. Anyone in the audience? Sure you can ask after. All right. Counselor and Deputy Mayor's comments. Counselor Heenan?
Yes, Your Worship and Deputy Mayor. I would just like to extend a thank you to Mr. Clark for his efforts to the town over the past years. Council recognizes the work that he has done, and we thank him. Thank you very much, Your Worship.
Thank you very much, Mr. Heenan, for that. Anyone else? Okay, I just wanted to just quickly highlight the chair of the Planning Advisory Committee, Mr. Chris Fleming, passed away after a long bout with cancer. And I just wanted to -- we don't normally highlight this, but since a former mayor of the town and his contributions, I know that even on the last council he got before us, and we start talking about a municipal plan and really helped guide it, and he's been a solid voice for me. Sometimes I say I'm more people, and he was more process because he knew process better than anyone that I've actually ever talked to when it came to the town of St. Andrews. So my thoughts are out to his friends. There is a motion to go to closed session. Is this time-sensitive, or? Yeah, okay, it won't take long. So at my -- what time is it at? Eight-twenty-one? Eight-twenty-one PM. Council move into closed session for the Local Governance Act, Section sixty-eight-one-C. Information that could cause financial loss or gain to a person or the local government or could jeopardize negotiations leading to an agreement or contract. Could I have a mover to go to close, please? I've got Counselor Heenan and seconded by Counselor -- we'll go on the TV. We're going to go to Counselor Hurdle. All in favor of going to closed session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, Your Worship.
That is everybody, and we'll take a minute to shut everything down. Thank you for attending.